This morning started off with a particularly unpleasant headache, but God gave thanks. It seems as though it is going away entirely, so I am excited about that. And it has not affected my ability to facilitate today's class. And I say facilitate because we're not going to be going through a lot of Scripture today. I think it's the new first class of the new year and we need, we need to start off on a less work kind of, kind of mentality, at least that is my understanding as a teacher. If only my teachers in the past had shared that mentality. So in today's class, we're going to be doing three things. First one is somewhat of our reflection on what we have done thus far. The second one is going to be a resolution based activity. And we're starting January and as Brother Greenell preached, as much as you have to be careful about your resolutions in regards to what you're establishing future wise, there's nothing wrong with making resolutions and it's usually our practice, starting a new year. You know, the idea of a fresh leaf is a little more prominent then. So we have, we have grand plans that we, we want to achieve for the year. And I want us to do an activity that I think will help us to ensure that we go about making these resolutions in the right manner. And then after that, we're going to do a getting to know you kind of exercise activity. I think it's a good idea, given that we're going to, we have been spending a lot of time together in this class and based on the progression of the class, we'll be spending a lot of time together for the, for the remainder of the class. That it would be nice to, to, to do activities like this from now on again. So you, you will see similar activities as the year continues. So the first thing that we're going to be doing, you're going to need pen and paper for these exercises or a phone, something to jot thoughts or your responses down. So I'm just going to, if you don't have that means now, I'm just going to ask you to get it. First activity and I'm going to encourage as many people as possible to, to share in this aspect, but you don't, you don't have to if you don't want to. But at least do it on your part, I hope. So the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to, you're going to choose one of these categories or topics and I want you to share what has resonated with you thus far in this Bible class. So when we're initially starting out many moons ago, I had established some objectives re the class and these were the objectives that were brought out. So scriptural insight, practical methods, guided introspection, interpersonal learning and educated enjoyment. I wanted through the process of, of the classes that we had, that these would be things that would, would, would come out in the lessons. We would, we would learn from Scripture. We would find practical ways of carrying out the things that we learned in Scripture. We would be led to look within, to identify how these things affect us personally and not just generically. That we would learn from each other and interact with each other and that we would enjoy the process. So what I'm asking now is for feedback from, from individuals as to something that resonated with you, whether it was something interesting or new that was revealed in Scripture as we studied, something that you learned that you can practically apply, something that has encouraged you to look internally. And that should be access myself, not access myself. Something that you've learned from someone else's experience or somebody else's point in the process of classes or something that you've enjoyed that in the process of the classes. Something that whilst we were doing classes, you enjoy. So I'm going to give you two minutes to think about it. And then I'm going to ask individuals to raise their hand and just share what, if, in what aspect it was and what exactly it was. All right. So take two minutes to think. You may have an answer for each category. I'm just going to ask you to choose one. Hopefully we can get a, a good amount of responses before we move on to our next exercise. All right, that was two minutes. So I'll get the ball rolling and then just encouraging you to raise your hands and sharing what it is that resonated with you. So mine is in the category of interpersonal learning. And it, having taught Bible class on two other occasions, it's something that I've always appreciated at St Andrew. And that is how much you learn slash how much you have to go and learn when teaching Bible classes at St Andrew. So in, in my preparation, in the slides that I prepare, in the Scriptures that I study, I try to do it as all encompassing as possible, trying to, to foresee the questions and the queries.
Oops, sorry.
Yes, to foresee all the possible questions that may come up. But after almost every class, there is something that I have to now go and, and try and look at more deeply. Something that I probably have to address that I didn't take into consideration initially. And the benefits to me, as much as sometimes you're like, boy, you thought you could figure out everything. Going to learn it is not just beneficial to me in regards to my own understanding, but also allows me to understand that everybody thinks differently. Everybody approaches things a different way. And there's always something that I can learn from someone else, even if they haven't studied as much as I have. And I think that's one of the beautiful things about Bible class. You get, you get an opportunity to look at the Scriptures that you have looked at time and time again, from so many different angles. And that's why I'm glad that the class participates as much as it does. Don't presume, even in the question that you ask, you may feel like, boy, this is a stupid question. But a lot of the things that you bring up engages others to think of things in a way that they haven't before. So for me, that is something that, that really encourages me in teaching the classes. And I hope that it will continue. All right, Brother Smith, I see you unmiked and then Brother Lacount afterwards.
Okay, I want to also look at interpersonal learning. I'm mimicking you exactly here now. I'm saying, I've been taught Bible classes many times as well. One thing that struck me is how big people like to play, you know? That's, that's what comes across to me is, is the extent to which, like my dear wife here, with her finger on the ready to win a few points by remembering the password. Jason and brother, big brother tenant, adult man, you know, in the middle of the romping, you know, to, to, to win. And by the way, I need to ask for Wada to investigate Brother Tenet. I just believe that there is something that needs to be investigated, some performance enhancing.
I think we give earlier giving him the answers.
So anyway, but seriously, the, the interactivity, that's interjection of whatever, competition, play, et cetera, that, that is what's belles out to me in terms of facilitation. I don't know that, you know, as a facilitator, I could be inspired as you are in terms of coming up with these games and challenges, but it makes a huge difference as you can see from the level of participation.
All right. Thanks much, Brother Smith, for sharing. I'd advise all the brothers, I don't know if you can get, you can give up your co-hosting privileges, but you can get to raise your hand because I know sometimes I miss you on the unmuting. Go ahead, Brother, Brother Jason.
Yeah, I just, I guess I went with spirit, sorry, scriptural insight. Specifically, the, the amount of information you provided on sheep. I don't know that much about sheep, but once you start to learn something that the people of the time who were, you know, involved in sheep herding, and this was an animal that was, you know, regularly being tended to, that they understood inherently in their society. These things that you learn, it starts to become really clear why the Scriptures use sheep so often as a, an analogy for us as people of God and how we behave. And, you know, some of the assumptions at first that like sheep were stupid creatures, but they're not. And it's just that they have certain tendencies and things that they do as part of what they are. That just, it opened up a lot of insight to why Scriptures constantly refer to us as, as sheep in that, in that sort of, that context. And it just, it enriches it and makes it, makes it make more sense. And it starts to, you start to be able to understand and be able to apply what these Scriptures are teaching you.
All right. Thank you very much, Brother, Brother Jason. I knew, I knew nothing either. I was, I was pleasantly surprised at how intricately the information that I found out linked with the way that it is brought out in Scripture. I mean, every time that I study the Bible, I am, I am blown away by, by how fundamentally intricate the Scripture is. I mean, it, it's amazing. I, I, from that angle alone, it, it, I find it impossible to believe that this was a man written book. It's, it's amazing how God has established the word to show that this is beyond just human capability. And I hope that as we continue to study, similar insights will be, will be provided. Anybody else before we move on? Doesn't have to be anything big. All right, even if you don't want to share, I'm hoping that something has resonated with those who are here and we will now move on to our next activity, which is what I call sharing resolutions. So as I had said, this particular time, New Year's is a time of resolution. More often than not, we focus on the things that we want to achieve for the year, whether it be corrective behavior, there are things that I was doing in the past year that I don't want to do anymore. There are things. Okay, before I get into this, I see a chat from Kirk. So Kirk says, "Scriptural insight." It says, "How easy it is to walk away slash be led astray, even with our own natural tendencies and responses." All right. Thanks much Kirk for sharing. So yes, as I was saying, so at this time, our, our mentality is usually focused on the things that we want to achieve. And they can be spiritual, physical, educational, emotional, mental, so many things that we probably have in mind for 2021, goals that we want to, to, to bring into fruition. And my, the exercise that I want us to do is based on Psalm chapter 37 verse four. And we were looking, well, verse three and four. We, we were looking at it when we're looking at Pill of Post-Promises. And it is one of the passages that a lot of the times we look to as encouragement to getting from God. I'll just read it to reiterate it. It says, "Trust in the Lord and do good. Dwell in the land and enjoy safe pasture. Delight yourself in the Lord and he will give you the desires of your heart." And when we looked at a lot of these words, the word desire as used in this passage speaks to a request or a petition. So I want us to look at our resolutions as requests of God rather than just considering them as things that we want to achieve through our own power. Let us look at these things as things that God will help us to bring into fruition. And I think this passage guides us in how we can align our resolutions with God to ensure that he will give them to us. And there are three contingencies in this passage that when we're looking at it earlier, establish three things that we needed to do and then God would give us the desires of our heart. So I want us to, to do this now as our exercise. So the first contingency was trusting in the Lord. And the word trusting there meant to hide for refuge, which literally meant to run to God for safety, for refuge. And in what I want us to do firstly is to choose one source of worry or anxiety that we are committing to leave in God's hands in 2021. So whatever it is that usually leads you to feel anxious, to feel worried, to be overly concerned, I want us to select one of those things. And we're going to commit that in 2021, I am going to put out my, all of my energy to leave this, to leave this source of worry or anxiety in God's hand. It's not going to be something that I am concerned about, not something, well, overly concerned about. It's not going to be something that I am going to bog myself down with worry. I am going to say, "God, you promised to take care of this. You are going to take care of it." We're going to try to foster the kind of trust in the Lord that is required through Scripture. I'm going to take it one step at a time. So just look for one thing, doesn't have to be huge. And, and we're going to say, "All right, this, I'm going to work on committing this to God and to not have it be something that provides me with that anxiety." The next thing is to do good. And the do good here literally speaks to doing good moral things. So helping others, being a good person, et cetera. And what we want to do is to choose one good thing that we plan to use our talents to achieve in 2021. So we're going to start from an area of strength. A lot of the time when we think of doing good and, you know, sometimes it goes in the areas that we are already struggling in and that makes it even harder to achieve. So we're going to focus on what we already are strong in or talents, the areas that we have been blessed with skill. And we're going to see how we can use those to at least achieve one good thing. And we're not limited to these things, you know, but this is, this is our checklist to, to motivate us to do more. So to write down one good thing that you want to use your talents to achieve in 2021. The next thing, delighting in the Lord. This one is a little more abstract and a little more complicated, but I still want us to see if we can figure out to choose one way that will strive to increase our spiritual joy. So we know the things that we, that we are happy about physically. What do you think that you can do to, to increase your spiritual joy? If it means finding a way to intertwine the things that provide you physical happiness with, with spiritual activities? If it means associating yourself with the individuals that you find yourself more joyful around, spiritually speaking? Try and figure out one way that you can strive to increase your physical, your spiritual joy. And then finally, we'll get to the part that is easier, the desires of our heart, which we probably have on, on our mind already. Choose one of the following areas. More than likely it would fall under one of these, so it should be easy. So relationships with our family, friends, work, health, entertainment, education. And share one goal that you'd like to achieve in the chosen area. And the reason I say share here is because I want it to be something that we can pray for, for one another. We, we, a lot of the times we speak about the benefits of prayer and the importance of being a group, et cetera, but we don't put it into practice as much as we should. So rather than these goals just being things that I want to achieve on my own, why would I not access the power of prayer? Of the power of the support group that I have in the church and also the resources that I have in the church? What if my goal is to get a job in a particular field? And there are brethren here who are looking to employ individuals in that field or know of individuals looking to employ. When we share these things, we give ourselves access to the support of our brethren. So I'm going to take a few minutes. By 11, by 11:50, I think we should be able to do this. If you, you don't complete it, that's fine. The more thought that you can give into these things, the better. What I want us to be able to at least share the desire of the heart so that we can, we can, we can access the support of our brethren as well as pray on behalf of one another. So 11 minutes to see how far we can get in this exercise. And then we will resume to, to share. All right, a slight change of plans. I know that our time to finish this is not opposite, but in, in doing it myself, because I like to do these things at the same time to ensure that I've ascribed the right amount of time, I realize that this may not capture what I want to capture in its entirety. So what I'm going to ask you to do is if you have already finished this, then wonderful. If you haven't finished as yet, then try please to finish it for Tuesday. And what we're going to do in Tuesday's class, we're going to have a kind of prayerish meeting Bible class where we, we share these things and then we pray on behalf of each other. So the class would, would essentially align itself around individuals bringing up what these things are and then we'll put it to God so that we maximize the power of prayer. So please, I'm encouraging everyone that to finish this up for Tuesday so that we can, we can, we can share. I know I'm an individual that doesn't bring things to God in this kind of manner as much as he should. And it's something I'm trying to work on in this year. And I trust that we, those who are strong in it will help to, to, to say the prayers on my behalf as well as encourage me to strengthen that area. So Tuesday, come with your desires, come with the things that you plan to do to make those desires a reality and we'll put it to God so that he'll give us the strength to achieve these, these desires and these commitments to him. All right, last, last exercise is our getting to know you exercise. Give me one second. All right, sorry about that. So yes, in this getting to know you exercise, I'm going to put forth some, some scenarios with some possibilities for selection where you have to choose one. You have to choose one of the, the situations. So you're going to need a pen. You're going to need a pen and paper or something to write down as per usual. And let me give you an example so we understand what we're doing. So for the first one, we have favorite type of patty. What you're going to do is you're going to write down which of the options facilitate what you deem to be your favorite type of patty. And we're going to, we're going to, so you can just put one beside it and just put whichever one you choose. There are, I think, seven of these questions. And then when, after we, you write down all your answers, we're going to go back and then we're going to find out what the, the selection of the masses were. So I'm going to ask you, when we go back through, when I indicate the type, you just raise your hand to identify if that is the one that you selected. And then based on the amount of hands that are raised, you will write that beside your answer to highlight how many people shared a similarity in that answer. At the end, we'll tabulate the points that you garnered. And the person with the highest point is the winner of, of the, of the most common. And the person with the lowest point is the winner of the most unique. So there's no losers in this game. All right. So first one, favorite type of patty. Please write it down. All right, moving on. Favorite mango type. Yes, it shouldn't take you long to answer this one. If you're deliberating, then maybe it's not really your favorite type. All right, five more seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. All right, moving on. Favorite fruit of the spirit. All right, I hope everybody has written down their answers already. Moving on. Favorite parable. All right, if you're looking at the parable and it's unfamiliar to you, then you can almost be sure that it's not your favorite. Five more seconds. All right. Favorite miracle of Jesus. All right, five seconds. Alright, five seconds. Favourite children's Bible story? Five more seconds. Alright. Favourite verse one in Psalms? This is not the Psalm entirety of the Psalm necessarily, but just the verse one. I agree with you, Engel. This one, this one, this pick was, was very hard for me. I given a ten seconds because this one is a little more challenging. Tommy, I apologise for your parable not being listed. Um, I, I trust you could find a favourite of the list. And when we get there, please share. I'm going to ask you to let me know what your favourite one is. Alright, moving on. Alright, and I believe this one now is the last one. Alright, wonderful, wonderful. I trust that everyone was able to, to provide an answer, even if your specific favourite thing wasn't there. You could at least choose from the ones that were there. So what we're going to do now, I'm going to go down the list. And I'm just going to ask you to raise your hand. If you're incapable of hand raising, then at least at that time you can say that that one is your favourite. And then I will allocate the numbers to each of the categories. So you can write it beside yours if that's the one you chose. Alright, favourite type of patty, beef? Alright, let's see. Auntie Sally, does you saying yes?
Yes, beef, yeah.
Alright, so Auntie Sally and Brother David, so two for beef. Um, let me see. Hold on, Paula, you're beef too?
Yes.
Okay, so three for, three for, for beef. Hold on, brother, brother Rowan, I'm guessing you're then beef until you have tried the bacon patty. So Rowan is beef as well, so four, four people for beef. Let me see, there was hands for cheese. No, David, it, oh, oh, yes, Andrea, Elliot, David. Wow, okay, so that's apologies, six people for beef. Six people for beef, so those who have beef, you can put six people for beef. Um, let me see the hands for those for cheese. Is that just Engel? Alright, so just Engel for cheese, the cheese stands alone indeed. Um, full house, I see Sister Elise, let me see any other handful. Engel, how much, are you, oh, this is a different member of the family, Engel? For full house? No, alright, so just Sister Elise for full house. Um, chicken? Let me see the hand for those, Sean, Sean's hand is already up for chicken. Seeing Kirk, Brother Jason and Britannia. So that's four, four hands for chicken. Soy? Brother Kirk, who, who hand do you put up for now? Oh, you're allowing it, I attempt. Any, nobody for soy? Not even vegeta- any vegetarians or them does not eat patties at all? Brother Smith, no patty at all? Or, oh, Aki's there? Alright, um, shrimp patty? Okay, thank you, Kemaria. I thought it was going to be me alone, but I appreciate the company. So two people for shrimp patty. Um, Aki? Alright, so I figured the vegetarian would, would, would jump on this one. So Sister Smith, Sister Tammy and Brother, Brother Trevor. Um, and oh, I never put vegetable, why? Alright, okay, so my apologies, Tessa. Um, Tammy says devil knows to be precise, nobody ever asked you where. Neither you, Kirk. Alright, so um wherever you eat the patty is, is, is fine for you, as long as it's not mad as. Which is ironically, I think, the only place that has the bacon patty. So four people for Aki, bacon. I guess if Kemar was in here, he would, he would say this is an outrage. So none for bacon. So just make sure that you wrote down the amount that was, um, was in accordance with yours. And we're going to move on. Let me just let you know now that based on some of the answers for this, I may have to remove some people permanently from the Bible class. Um, let me see those who said stringy. Alright, no hands there. Let me see the hands that said Julie. Okay, I see, I see. I see where, where the, the, the Tenon family is, is, is strong on this one. So Sandra, Elliot, David, the Julie. Stephen Grenell, of course, says Julie. Britannia, Engel, Kirk. Brother Smith, I presume your mic is open because you stand for Julie?
Not only that, but I'm kind of con- concerned of, of their other types, really.
That is, that is excellent, Brother Smith. This was supposed to be just one answered category for the whole class. I am, I am disappointed. But yes, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven people. For, hold on, Julie, but recent convert to East Indian. What does that mean, Rowan? Are you Julie or are you East Indian?
You can put me on the border?
But no, there's no border here, brother Rowan. You're on one side or you're on the other. So you need to make a very deliberate try for twenty twenty one.
Uh, East Indian, I guess.
Oh, no, man, oh, no. Can, can we change admin, please? Alright, so seven, seven people for Julie.
No, hold on, we're on server level, I, I need to hear it again.
Brother Rowan?
I, I think Sir Spindra did incriminate me. You heard those, Steve, right?
I, I did, Brother Rowan.
Okay, thank you.
That's East Indian. So, so we know, we know what, where to leave him. Um, number eleven? Alright, no responses there. Let me see the East Indians now.
Indian.
Wow, wow, why are there so many hands? Oh, this is, this is sad. This is sad. Okay, so we have Marlon, removed from class. Brother Jason, removed from class. Kemaria, I'm so disappointed, Kim. Look how, how glad in you for shrimp.
Brother, brother Jason, just come, give him a chance.
Okay, yes, yes, yes. It's a, it's a exempt because she's the password queen. So I can't remove her from the class, but I'm disappointed. Sister Paula, shake my head. Tammy, understandable. Never expect much better from Tammy, to be honest. So um, one, two, three, four, five, six, plus Brother Marlon, that's, I mean, Brother Rowan, that's seven.
Did you have me down?
Pardon? Well, I decided not you too. Oh, they say the greatest betrayals come from family. Ah, it, where's, where's dad and mom when we need them? And we know mom definitely is Julie. Alright, so that's eight. Um, and, and Sister Junior, East Indian from Junior family, that's nine. What is going on? Actually, nine for East Indian. Um, any for Bombay? Any for Blackie? Well, I feel like I can, or probably Minamia Mango. Any for Harry?
Even?
Yes, yes.
Isn't Harry and Stringer the same?
Boy, not based on the studies that I did, but you might know better than I.
The same, man.
Alright, so maybe here and string is the same. Hold on, Sister Junior here. Hold on, how many Sister Ju- Junior family? How many Sister Junior, um, answers we're getting? Because I see East Indian and then I see Harry. So I will move her out of East Indian and put her in here, you know? Alright, so I'll put her in here and take her out of East Indian. Eight for East Indian, not nine. Thank you, thank you, Junior for giving me that, that opportunity. And let me see Minamia, Minamia Mango, apart from Sean, who have any others? Or Elliot? Sean or Elliot was Minamia? David, remind me? Sean, so Sean, Minamia Mango. Just one for Minamia Mango. Alright, moving on. Favourite fruit of the spirit? Let me see the hands for love. Brother Engel and Brother Smith. And Sister Tim. So three people for love. Joy? Okay, so Sister Endal, sorry, Sister Endala is love as well, so four people for love, not three. Um, two people for joy, Brother David and Sister Elliot. And oh, and Brother Lacount, so three people for joy. Peace? Um, Sister Smith, Brother Kirk and Sandra, that are three people for peace. Oh, and Rowan, so four people for peace. I see somebody typing here, Minagod, or remember that being a fruit of the spirit? I presume that that is, that was for it is for earlier. Um, patience. I have my hand up there. Um, welcome as well, Brother Howard and Brother Marlon. So the three of us are patients. Um, kindness? Alright, Sister Paula, anybody else? No, just Sister.
No, hi, I'm.
Oh, Sally, alright, so Sister Paula and Auntie Sally, the two for kindness. Goodness? Alright, we're not really talking about that one anyway. Um, faithfulness? Hmm, gentleness? Alright, so finally, self-control. So I know Sean said self-control already. Britannia joins Sean for self-control. So that's two people for self-control. Alright, moving on. Favourite parable? Alright, so before we start this, Sister Tammy, can you just let me know what your favourite parable is? So I can see if I should be ashamed for not having included it. Oh, the persistent widow, you know, I was, I was going to put that one. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but yes, that one, that one should have been in it. Unfortunately, I, I overlooked it, though. Please forgive, shame indeed, shame indeed, Sister Tammy, shame indeed. Alright, um, the prodigal son. Alright, Kemaria and David. No, there is no all of the above Britannia. So Kemaria, David and Engel, that's three people for the prodigal. Oh, and Sister Endala, so four people for the prodigal son. The talents, parable of the talents. Alright, Britannia, Brother Smith, I see on mics, I presume that you as well. So two people for prodigal son, I mean for parable of the talents. Oh, and Sister Sandra for parable of the talents, so three, three people for parable of the talents. Um, so on the seed? Alright, um, oh, one person, Sister Paula, that was you or? Okay, Rowan, the so on the seed, anybody else for soa? Or Paula for the soa as well, so two for the soa. Um, foolish builders, wise and foolish builders. Um, I see Sean and Elliot, anybody else? Brother Marlon, Brother Howard. Alright, so four people for the wise and foolish builders. Ungrateful servant, that is my favourite. And apparently just my favourite. Alright, um, the rich fool, which was the star of today's sermon. Alright, now, okay. Brother James is two that you're trying to get, Brother James? You're joining Sister Junior, you have a pick one, Brother James? Which one, this one or the wise and foolish builders? I see the no, Brother James, but I'm not sure which no it is for. No for this one or no for the first one? Alright, so I wait on confirmation from Brother James on that one. Um, the good Samaritan? Alright, so Auntie Sally and Sister.
Yeah.
Sister Althea and Brother Lacount, Britannia, you cannot put up here again. Oh, no for the last one, oh, so you're sticking with the wise and foolish builder. Britannia, you can't put up here again. Um, so, so four people for the good Samaritan. Um, the wedding banquet? Yeah, that persistent widow should definitely be up instead of this one. Um, the ten virgins, another star of today's sermon. Um, the ten virgins, another star of today's sermon. Alright, sister, hold on, I went Allison reading now. Alright, yes, Allison, that's, that's, you're on your own on that one.
I can see that, yes.
Um, the Pharisee and the publican. Alright, nobody on that one. Alright, moving on to favorite miracles of Jesus. I know that we are at twelve fifteen, a beginning of some extra time to finish this. Anybody who has issue with that, please raise your hand and let me know if I can't get the extra time. Alright, from nobody, no raise them hand, including Tommy, then we know we're good. Alright, um, favorite miracles of Jesus, let me see those who picked water to wine. Alright, brother Jason. Anybody else? No wine enthusiast in here. Alright, so brother Jason, you're on your own with that one. Healing the ten lepers. Alright, sister, sister Tommy and Kim. Two people for that one. Oh, and Rowan, so three people for that. Raising Lazarus. And they never like Lazarus? Okay, brother Kirk, brother Kirk put up a hand in defense of Lazarus. So one person for raising Lazarus. Um, feeding the five thousand, you see. Alright, so Engel, Sean and Elliot. So that's three people for feeding the five thousand. I'm sure there are more people who never want to look like Bellias, but we'll go with that three. Still in the storm, um, sister Sandria, brother David, myself, sister Paula, sister Althea, sister Britannia, sister Allison and brother Smith, that's what we're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Talking about. Oh, and Auntie Sally, and Auntie Sally, welcome back to the family, Auntie Sally. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Look at those points. We're still in the storm. You're back in it, Stephen. Alright, casting out the unclean spirit. Nobody. Alright, raising Jairus's daughter. Oh, I see one more person for feeding the five thousand, so feeding the five thousand is now four. So Sean, Elliot and Engel, they can adjust that to four. Um, Marlon is the only person for raising Jairus's daughter, so one there. Healing the lady with the issue of blood. Alright, so brother Howard and sister Elise, so that's two people for the lady of the issue of blood. And healing the blind man with mud. Alright, nobody know what mud on their eyes. Yes, that's understandable. Alright, moving on. Favorite children's Bible story? Alright, come Stephen, if you can pick the one where Sean and Elliot pick, you know you win. Um, the creation story. Alright, rule that one out. Oh, Allison, alright, so Allison stands alone once again. Abraham and Isaac. Alright, even that one, they're boring. Um, around the walls of Jericho. Alright, brother Marlon. Very funny, Kirk. Uh, so brother Marlon, it's just you are walking around Jericho. The ten plagues of Egypt.
What time?
Pardon? Oh, sorry, sorry. David and Goliath. I skipped that one because I know most of the hands are gonna go up here, and I did not choose it.
David and what?
So, um, so Sean. Sister Smith, sister Paula, brother Kirk, brother Smith and Auntie Sally. So one, two, three, four, five. Six, seven, so seven people for David and Goliath, big surprise. Um, nobody for ten plagues of Egypt, I presume? Oh, sister Paula. Alright, so sister Paula, ten plagues of Egypt. Um, Queen Esther, that is Elliot's favorite, anybody else?
Sorry, Stephen.
What's that?
My hand was for David and Goliath only.
Oh, so it says eight people for David and Goliath then. Woo, woo, that's great. Um, so Elliot, you stand on your own with Queen Esther. Um, Daniel in the lion's den, that's sister Sandria, brother Jason, brother Howard and brother Rowan, so four people for Daniel in the lion's den. The three Hebrew boys, that is David's favorite as well as Britannia's. Um, anybody else? Alright, just those two for that. Jonah and the whale slash fish. Um, Tommy and sister Camaria, so two for that as well. And finally, Solomon and the baby. Which is jointly shared between myself and sister Endala, woman of class, of course. So two for that as well. Favorite verse one in Psalms, this one was, this one was hard, hard, oh! Engel is Daniel in the lion's den as well, so five people for Daniel in the lion's den. Um, this one was very hard for me to choose. But I went with the one that was my favorite when I was younger, so. Psalm, chapter one, blessed is the man who walketh not in the council of men. Nobody else? Okay, so I guess Stephen stands alone. Oh, big up yourself, brother Rowan, big up yourself, George is for life. So two people for Psalm one. Um, Psalm twenty-three. Figured as much. Look, look there, look there, boy, boy. Alright, so we have sister Elise. Um, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and Auntie Sally, eight. Alright, so eight people for Psalm twenty-three. Um, sister Paula, yes, Psalm twenty-three as well?
Yes, Stephen.
Alright, nine people for Psalm twenty-three. Psalm one twenty-one, sister Sandria and sister Camaria, so two people for Psalm one twenty-one. Psalm sixty-one, so we have Elliot and sister Tommy, that's two people for Psalm sixty-one. Psalm forty-six. We have David. I presume the person on brother Smith. V T E, are you Psalm forty-six as well? I guess not. Okay, sister Elise is Psalm forty-six as well, so that's three people Psalm forty-six. Psalm thirty-seven. Alright, nobody. Psalm number forty. Okay, Marlon, stands alone. Psalm one hundred. Alright, Britannia stands alone as well. Psalm one ninety, sorry, Psalm nineteen. Okay, Shaun, okay, Britannia is, sorry, I missed Shaun, so it's two hundred for, two people for Psalm one hundred. Brother Jason, I presume you're Psalm nineteen? Alright, I'll take that as a yes. Um, Psalm twenty-seven. Okay, oh, so that's the one for brother, oh, brother Kirk is Psalm twenty-seven. That is funny, brother Engel, that is funny. I will not facilitate any idea of O B A working sent Thomas. Alright, moving on, we'll hook up to a close. Oh, sorry. Worst customer service. Let me see those who say government organizations.
I do.
Alright, so we'll have. So, one, two, three, four, five, six. Um, and Rowan says seven. Oh, wow, sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And Stephen says ten, so that's ten. Alright, for, let me see those, and we get those, we get those hands down. Those who say utilities. Alright, so sister. Funny, Tommy, um, so. So Elliot, brother Howard, sister Tommy and brother, brother Smith, as well as Galaxy J seven. So that's five people for utilities. Banks. Sandria and David. Alright, nobody else? Because the other ones outweigh them. Um, fast food restaurants. Oh, sister Elise as well, so three people for banks, David. Um, fast food restaurants, it's just brother Jason, I mean, all of these, to be honest, have bad customer, customer service. Oh, Sean as well for fast food, so two people for fast food restaurants. Um, fancy restaurants? Anybody for fancy restaurants? No, alright, insurance companies. Alright, so I guess government and utilities take the cake. And finally, favorite subject. Let me see those who go with math, lad. Brother Jason and brother Rowan and brother Engel.
And Sally, that's my favorite.
Auntie Sally?
You know that, you know that.
Oh, I know, but I don't want to hear it. Um, so, so. Brother Rowan, brother Jason, sister, brother Engel, Engel, I thought you'd say English, and, um, and Auntie Sally, so four people for math. David, that's funny. Um, let me see the hands of those who say English. Let me see their hands in the air, everybody. Okay, no. So two, three people for English, myself, sister Smith and Galaxy J seven. Big up on yourself, wanna know the way, the rest of people just don't know the way. Um, science. Oh, wow. Alright, so Marlon, well, naturally, Marlon, brother Howard. Um, sister Kim. Sister Britannia, oh, before that, public service announcements, sister Elise is English as well. So all y'all English folk, move it up to four. And, um, so one, two, three, four, for science. For business, we have sister Sandria.
So how are we just going to slide past social science?
Oh, sorry, sorry, social science.
I see why.
No, brother Smith, brother Smith is there with you. So brother, he's on Allison. Oh, David, David, you're the person who said nothing, I don't know what you're talking about, how could I? Oh, you disowned them yourselves. Oh, Kirk said psychology as well, so three people for social science. Um, business, well, it's a Sandria, anybody else for business? Guess nobody doing business about business. I guess David said none, but there's no none up there, so I'm going to throw David in business as well, seeing as he teaches economics. So two people for business. Um, I T, oh, three people for business, sorry, three people for business. I T, I see Sean for I T, nobody else? Where's Alan when they need him? History, history is in, see history, oh, I skip history, history, sorry, sorry, Tommy, sorry. History, okay, so it's Tommy alone put up a hand, so I don't feel so bad. Um, so Tommy, Tommy, one for history. I agree, David, but seeing as you never pick one, it's your fault. Um, art, oh, I T, well, you see, you're gonna have me a jump ball over the place. I T for Sean. Um, art. Too late, David, we don't choose here. Anybody else for art apart from Elliot? Boy, Elliot, them uncultured. Engineering? Nobody for engineering, or Brandon, the P E?
I can get two, I will take P E as well.
Oh, this brother has been too late. Alright, um, just going to take. Two more minutes, I'm just going to add you to, hold on. Paula, which one are you for?
I'm work, none of them, but I'm working with P E.
You're working with P E, so one for P E. Brother Howard, they take chemistry or do the sciences. I agree with you, brother Howard, you can take out physics too. Tommy, take chemistry out of the world with no problem, but I like, I like the spirit. David, like you, I would have chosen none. Alright, so I'm going to ask you in two minutes to just add up your points, add up the points that you have. And we need to decide who the winners are. All the maths people, you shouldn't make no mistake here, all the English people, usually can't kill later. Everybody didn't know if they came have problems, but I guess that's the only reason why she named Kim.
Hi, Stephen.
Hello, sister Paula.
How much was it for government, please?
Ten people for government.
Thank you.
Or in this case, I should say against government. Alright, so here how we're gonna do it. I'm going to, I'm going to give you a range of points. And if you're in the range, you just go raise your hand and tell me how much points you got in that range, alright? And we keep going until we find out, well, we know who the least is from the beginning. So we can big up the most uniquest, yes, that's a made up word. And then we're going to go until we find out who have the most points. Alright, so we're starting with zero to ten. Now we see the hands of those who are zero to ten points. Alright, it wasn't that, oh, sorry, is there anybody still calculating who may have liked English or history? Alright, good, that seems like everybody plus Tommy has calculated. So we're going to, we're going to, alright, so eleven to twenty. Let's see the hands for those who have eleven to twenty points. Oh, okay, so it looked like we have found our, our uniqueness of the year award. Goes to unanimously, brother Marlon, with how many points, brother Marlon? Brother Marlon? No need to be shy, come collect your award, but we need to know how much points you got. No need to be shy, come collect your award, but we need to know how much points you got. Brother Marlon, I see, was it an accident that you raised your hand? Brother James, I miss the point system. All right, that's unfortunate, hopefully later, you give me answers later, Brother Smith, I'll see if, Brother Howard, I'll see if I can give you the answer. So wait, well, so Marlon didn't get all the points either. All right, moving on, those between twenty-one and thirty. Hold on, Engel, no maths you like, or if you need auditing on your calculations. Anyway, all right, so none between twenty-one and thirty, all right, people catch points, man, those between thirty-one and forty. All right, so we have. Sister Endala, Sister Camaria and Brother Jason, so one of the three of you will be the, the person who gets the uniqueness of the year award. Um, Camaria, how many points? All right, the Camaria, thirty-nine, um, Sister, Brother Jason, how many points? Thirty-three. Brother David, how many points? Thirty-six approximately, and Sister Elise, how many points? Thirty-seven, so congratulations to Brother Jason, who wins our uniqueness of the year award. All right. Run us up. Brother David then Sister Elise. All right, moving on, forty-one to fifty. Hold on, you have people who have more than that, okay, so my hand is raised, I got forty-one. Sister Sandria, how much you got? Forty-one as well, boy, great minds, great minds. Think the same, and, um, you can't have more than fifty-one to sixty, fifty-one to sixty? Paula, how much, how much you got, Paula?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, all right. Um, I'm going to hope that the other people just never did calculate properly, let me see, sixty-one to seventy?
I do.
Auntie Sally, how much you get, Auntie Sally?
Sixty-three.
Woo! Woo! Um, let me see the hands of those who may have gotten higher than that. All right, so it looks like we have a champion. Auntie Sally, congratulations. A greenel shall lead them indeed. All right, um. We've gone well over time, I want to thank everybody for giving me this leniency in doing so. Um. As I said, those who haven't finished the exercise. Going to ask you to, to do so, so that on Tuesday, we can bring all these things to God in prayer, password. Go ahead, Britannia, Sister Britannia.
Chapter is the champion.
Okay. I guess Sister, Sister Al, Sister Althea said she wants no part of that declaration. All right, good job, good job, Richard. Um. So the password. The password for Tuesday's class is. David's favorite subject is none. David's favorite subject is none. So, um, thank you for participating, I hope that we enjoy the interaction. Um, and I look forward to Tuesday's class where we can put our resolutions, or at least our resolution to God in prayer, all right? So, thank you very much, I'll hand over to the singing of the birthday song. Um. And enjoy the rest of your day.
Good evening, thanks again, everyone, afternoon, sir. Thanks again for all, um, participating in our Bible discussion. Please remember we'll meet again on Tuesday at six-thirty as we continue our Bible discussions. And we will sing happy birthday for Sister Chris and Sister Chung, um, who celebrates their birthday on Friday. So let us, um, put our voices together as we wish them a happy, happy, happy birthday, Lord willing, on Friday. Happy birthday to you, oh, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Chris and Sister Zina. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you, my ladies. Happy birthday, and may the Lord bless you. Happy birthday. Please remember also, we have navigating life on January the sixteenth. Sixteenth of January at six-thirty P M, please begin sharing and making that. Um, be aware also, this Sunday begins our kickstart gospel meeting. So that this Sunday, please remember, we'll go on, um, the tenth through the thirteenth. Um, for our kickstart, kickstart here, our gospel meeting with the speakers being Brother Michael Roberts, Brother Dave Osborne, and Brother Sheldon Shirley, who close up, close us off on the Wednesday night. Also, remember the Hope Bay congregation will be having a series on dealing with temptation. Um, that begins the twenty-fourth of January. Those are our announcements, thanks again for participating in our Bible discussion. See you again on Tuesday, Lord willing, God bless, take care.